The council was involved in an executive session that went a little bit longer. And so your patience is appreciated, and I think my 10 seconds is up. And so, I call the meeting to order for our December 2nd, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. Welcome. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll invite you to rise, and former council member Vice Mayor Cook, please do the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. What I would like to do is invite Honorable Mel McDonald. And Mel, can you share with us in the past what leadership role you had here in the town of Gilbert?
I was on the council from 1993 to 1997, and left in 1997, and lived in Gilbert since 1990.
Well, I think Mel deserves a round of applause. And Mel, would you be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Another former council member has accepted the assignment to offer the invocation, Kent
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered this evening and in this season of thanksgiving. We are grateful for this country in which we live and the freedoms we enjoy. Grateful to be here this evening to participate in a town council meeting. Thankful, Father, for the blessings we receive. We're grateful tonight to be able to remember our dear friend and former council member, and pray that his family will know of our gratitude for his service here. We're thankful, Father, for the blessings we receive, and ask for thy Spirit to be with us this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you. We'll move to Gen. item number one. Councilmember Ben Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could please have those who have been invited to participate in this item, please We appreciate the opportunity to have each of you here today. And just to introduce this topic, I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation that we're going to be presenting, so that the public will understand who we're honoring tonight. Whereas the town council and citizens of the town of Gilbert are greatly saddened by the death of the Honorable Reyno Bird Baldwin, former council member, on October 28th of 2014, and wish to express gratitude and respect for the late council member. And whereas Reyno, the first African American to serve on the Gilbert Town Council, was appointed to the council in June 1993 and served until July 1995, as a well-respected face of diversity for the town, he was a strong voice conveying to diverse groups the positive aspects of Gilbert. And there's more here I may read in just a minute, but we're honored to have Reyno's wife Hazel here tonight. And what I'd like to do before we kind of get back to this is to have you perhaps introduce who's here, at least from the family, and then we'll give the former colleagues an opportunity to talk as well. But if you could introduce yourself and maybe give us a memory or two.
My name is Hazel Bird Baldwin, and to my right is my oldest son Reyno Bird Baldwin, I'd just like to say that my husband loved the town of Gilbert. He was proud of his accomplishments, and he was especially proud of the library. He helped sponsor this town.
I had the opportunity to speak with my father today, who had the opportunity to work with and for your husband, and he shared some neat memories with me that I can share with you later. But just the impression I came away with was that he was a wonderful, positive man who loved Gilbert, loved to serve, and was always willing to help. And I appreciated that and wished I'd had the opportunity to know him, but I think we're all benefiting from his service even today. And some of his colleagues have come here tonight to honor him as well. And so I'd like to give each of them an opportunity to introduce themselves, tell us when you served on the council, and maybe share a memory or a thought.
Mel McDonald, I was on the council from 1993 to 1997. Reyno served with me the first two years. I have fond memories of him. I thought he brought not only great ideas but needed diversity to the council. I remember him as a kind and loving and gentle man, a wonderful wit. I would occasionally bump into him in Gilbert after I left the council and after he'd left the council. He never lost that wit. I was so saddened when I saw in the newspaper that he had passed on. He was a crown jewel in the town of Gilbert, and he'll be deeply missed. And I want his wife and family to know how much I loved him and cared for him. He was a good and decent man.
My name is Phil Long. I served from 1993 to 1999. Reyno was also a neighbor of mine as well as a colleague, and we're all humble when we're serving for our community, and it's quite an honor. But I don't think anybody was more proud to be a council member of this community than Reyno. I'd see him at many, many different committees and boards and commissions. He worked very hard during his time he was on the council, and as others have said here before and after as well. We're going to miss him very much.
Hello, my name is Larry Morrison. I served on the council from 1991 for 16 years. I knew Reyno, and I like to feel that he was an honored and trusted friend, a very good friend. The one thing that I remember about Reyno is his enthusiasm and wanting to do things. And, you know, he would come into a council meeting or even when we're on the street and say, "Larry, you can't guess what I just, I'm going to do, you know, this, going to this, and this, and this." And you'd say, "Calm down, Reyno, it'll happen," you know? But he was, he was just enthusiastic, and again, his dear, dear thoughts were to the town, and it was an honor to serve with him when I did.
My name is Kent Stevens. I served from 92 to 97, also during the time of Reyno's service, set by him on the dais, and had a great opportunity to feel, as has been mentioned, his enthusiasm and love for the town. He was a little bit like a kid in a candy store when he was in the council chambers. He just loved the process, he loved the challenge, loved the issues that came before him. As has been said, he will be deeply missed. He was a great, great servant here in the town, a great example to all of us, and we will dearly miss him.
Thank you very much. I'll stay right here next to these former council members, just to feel what it feels like, as that day's quickly coming. We will finish out here by reading this. Whereas we are thankful for Reyno's service and presence in our community, and it is fitting that we set apart a special observance and recognition thereof. Now therefore let it be known that I, John W. Lewis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Gilbert, do hereby find it an honor to proclaim December 2nd, 2014, as Reyno Bird Baldwin Day in the town of Gilbert. And so we honor him, and we thank you for your sacrifice, if you will, in letting him serve, and for all that you and that he has done for our community. Thank you very much.
family to come join me here at the front. Mayor, I'm going to be very short because I'm losing my voice a little bit, so I'm just going to say how honored we are to be here, in your presence here tonight. I'm going to turn this to Chief Dorn, who will fill us in on the details of why this is such a special night for us here in Gilbert.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I was honored with some of our council members and also some of our residents here in Gilbert to attend the ceremony to award the Purple Heart Medal to Sergeant First Class Jason Barkley, the Arizona Army National Guard. Very special for me to be invited, as we had the honor of serving together in the Army National Guard here in Arizona for many, many years. And while I was not deployed at the same time that Jason was when he received his wounds, which was 2005, in Iraq during a deployment, we did have the honor of serving together. Just a few comments about the Purple Heart Medal before I turn the microphone over and let Jason make a few comments. Purple Heart Medal is somewhat unique in that most medals that our service members get during their service is something that they desire to get. Purple Heart is not one of those medals that you hope to get during your military career. The Purple Heart goes clear back to 1782 during Revolutionary War under General Washington, later President Washington, who first developed the Purple Heart Medal to recognize soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, members of the armed forces, who are wounded or killed in action during combat operations. It's, the special meaning behind it is that the Purple Heart illustrates the sacrifices made by our men and women in uniform, as they're willing to put themselves in harm's way in order to protect this country, to protect the liberties that we have, the things that we stand for, and all those things that we cherish in life. And because of that, it's a very special award to be presented by the President of the United States. So with that, if it's all right, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Jason for a minute, and he can explain to you what led up to being awarded this, and what your ties are to the town of Gilbert, and what this means to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Bring you back a little bit. What I found about the Purple Heart was, it's actually the oldest award given. It was originally given by George Washington himself on the Continental Army. To get this award and to come full circle now today, it ties us back to when our country was created, and when our fight was way back in the day with the English. This all occurred 2005, our first tour, the 860th MP Company, they're based out of Tucson now. Basically, I worked in Western Baghdad, Albury Grove District area, on a generally cut-off three-hour tour, just a quick patrol in the area, and then it turned into about a 12-hour patrol. But we were attacked by insurgents with a car bomb on my lead vehicle. And they say it's kind of a hero award, which is really hard for me to take, because I was just the guy in the front truck. Luckily, the armored vehicles worked real well, but they basically failed on their attack. We had a real complex ambush, and the real heroes were the guys that were with me that day, the entire squad. And those, the stories behind that, that event, is rarely told. But without their actions and what they did under combat, I wouldn't be here today. It could have been a lot worse. But fast forward a few years, they looked at, you know, car bombs and concussions and TBI, and that's where this came from, that initial event. Treat it for you, just keep going, like you're playing a good game, you're injured, but you keep fighting. That was my first tour. And so, but I really appreciate everybody coming tonight and the recognition. Appreciate them still serving. It was a great honor to serve with you, Chief Dorn, way back in the day. I do miss you. Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. What an awesome privilege it is to have Sergeant First Class Barkley here tonight as a Purple Heart recipient. That is just, really fills me with gratitude, and just to see that and recognize the sacrifices and risks that are taken for our freedom. And that's really a perfect segue into my assignment tonight. We want to recognize some other veterans as well. We had six Gilbert residents, correct, that were recently inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. And last council meeting, we had, I think, four out of the six, there were a couple we were missing. And tonight, we have those two remaining veterans, and we would sure love to invite them forward. Paul Switek, I hope I said that right, and Lowell Fox, please come forward. We're honored to have you gentlemen here tonight, and thank you so much for your service. We recognize that our freedom isn't free, it is with a price, and we appreciate your sacrifice and willingness to serve our country. And I'll just hand the microphone over to each of you if you want to just say a few words. Not mandatory, but we'd love to hear from you.
I'd like to thank everybody for inviting us here. As Chief Dorn said, you don't join the military looking for recognition, but it's nice to have your peers recognize you, so thank you all.
Really like to comment on the Gilbert community and the efforts that are put out there to recognize veterans. I'm humbled to have been inducted into the Hall of Fame, but I'm more humbled by the others that are really the big heroes, that are deserving enough, all our adulation and support in defense of the country. I was basically a logistics kind of guy, bean counter, if you will, but the young men and women that are out there in the hotspots of the world today are an awesome force to behold, and I feel humbled by their service. So thank you for this bit of recognition.
I add this comment that I've had a chance to attend the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame induction ceremony three times, and the last one, we had our six Gilbert resident, and so we thought, we wanted to recognize all six. And so the two of you who were not able to attend last time, thank you for coming, and thank you for that nice round of applause. And last time we met, big round of applause, too. And what an honor to have the six of you as Gilbert residents being recognized like this. All right, now we would like to invite up our coyotes. Come on up. Lady Oats, come on forward right up in this area here. We're going to try to squeeze you all in here, the lady oats. It's good to, we love to recognize greatness in Gilbert, and standing here with me tonight is more Gilbert greatness, and a whole lot of them. Come on over, we've got to have the coaching staff as well. So, I'm going to stand over here and let Dave Ben and Dave introduce themselves, and kind of tell us a little bit about this wonderful state championship that you won, and then maybe each of the girls can introduce themselves and tell us very briefly either what grade you're in, or what your favorite event is, or your best event, something very brief, since there are so many of us here, but we'd love to hear from each of you.
My name is Dave Eppert. I'm a diving coach, and we had a great group of divers this year, and particularly, one in particular, she'll introduce herself. I have two of my divers here. Bailey Stipp, who is a two-time state champion, defended her title this year. And Alex Soke, our other diver. So they, our third diver was not able to be here, but I was really impressed with our divers. We established all new school records this year with the boys and the girls, and had a great season, so it was wonderful.
Hi, my name is Ben Scott. I'm one of the swim coaches, and our girls just did really amazing this year. We had more girls qualify for state than we've ever had before. We placed the highest we've been in state. We've never won before, the highest before this was third. So they really knocked it out of the park. They destroyed pretty much every school record that we had, too. And also, just a little bit of recognition, we had so many girls who made it up in the state, but then so many more who placed in that top eight, which is where all those big points are. And just one real quick recognition, we had a girl who actually placed second in three of her different events, that is Miss Eleanor Duncan.
I'm Coach Dave Peters. I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of this team. You know, Gilbert is a community of faith and family, and the key to our success is definitely that we are one big family, a very close team. I am, these girls make me a better person every year, and I'm just honored to be part of it.
I'm Rachel Heronima, and I'm a junior at Campo, and my favorite event was probably the 200 IM. I mean, I didn't swim that much, but it's my favorite event. And it was my first season here, and it was a really great season, so I made lots of friends, and it was really fun, so.
I'm Emily Melcher, and I'm a freshman, and my favorite was the 100 Free.
I'm Megan Gunder. I'm a freshman, and my favorite was 53.
I'm Alex Soke. I'm a senior. My favorite dive was the inward one and a half.
I'm Bailey Stipp. I'm a junior, and I am the current state champion for diving.
I'm Jessie DeFoude. I'm a senior, and my favorite events were the 50 and 100 Free.
I'm Samantha Penya. I'm a senior, and my favorite event was the medley relay.
Hi, my name is Millery Litnovich. I'm a senior, and my favorite events are the 100, or 200 IM and the 100 breaststroke.
I'm Natalie Tringam. I'm a junior, and my favorite events were the 500 and 200 Free.
I'm Claire Housley. I'm a junior, and my favorite event was 100 backstroke.
My name is Katie Haig. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite event is the 100 breaststroke.
I'm Cora Costu, and I'm also a sophomore, and my favorite event was the 50 Free.
I'm Eleanor Duncan, and I'm a sophomore, and my favorite race was the 100 breaststroke and the 200 IM.
I'm Maya White. I'm a freshman, and my favorite event was 100 butterfly.
My name's Sydney Skiles. I'm a sophomore. My favorite event is the 100 breast.
I'm Emily Gerizzo. I'm a freshman, and my favorite event was the 200 Free and 100 Fly.
My name is Lauren Embley. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite events were the 200 IM and the 100 backstroke.
I'm Lexi Watts. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite event is the 200 Free style.
I'm Sylvia McConnell. I'm a junior, and my favorite event was the 100 backstroke.
I'm Abby Malloy. I'm a junior, and my favorite event was the 100 Fly.
I'm Shelby Tone, and I'm a freshman, and being on this team has made me a better person and a better swimmer.
I'm Lizzie Key. I'm a senior, and my favorite events are probably the relays, because they're the most fun.
I'm Sophia Castile. My favorite events were the 100 Fly and the 200 medley relay.
Hi, I am Katherine Pinto, and my favorite event was the 100 backstroke, and I'm also a freshman.
Wonderful. Let's give it up for them, state champions. Coaches, you look like you have a lot of fun together, and you got a great group, and we congratulate you for representing Gilbert so well. Let's squeeze together for a picture, and it's great to have you here.
here in Gilbert a week from this Saturday. Well, Daryl and Brian, well, can you folks share with us a little bit about the event that's coming up a week from this Saturday?
Well, it's a pleasure being out here. This is our fifth year doing the Spirit of Giving Award presented by Phoenix Mesa Gateway, and Arizona's event of the year here in the town of Gilbert, December 13th, out at Freestone Park. We are so pleased to once again have the town of Gilbert host the event. In the five years that we've had the event, we've been able to place over 1,600 dogs and cats in forever homes and raise over $45,000 for Maricopa County and Friends of Animal Care Control. And we invite you to come out and enjoy some Christmas spirit. We have carolers and pet adoption event, and Christmas is our, and it starts at 8:00 in the morning on the 13th of December. So, we're extremely excited to have the event again, and I look forward to having a plethora of vendors and runners and Christmas spirit, Vice Mayor.
Well, how nice is that? But there's actually a special kind of presentation that happens at this event, and that is called the Spirit of Giving Award. And this year's recipient goes to Amanda Chiller? Chilcher. And let me just read a little bit about Amanda. Amanda's true mission in life is the future of her students in the world and their understanding on being compassionate to others and to animals. She gives totally unselfishly of herself to shelter homeless animals. Amanda is very deserving of this year's 2014 12K Christmas Spirit Giving Award. With that, can we give her a round of applause? And Amanda, could you share a little bit about the volunteer hours you spent?
I volunteered at Maricopa County Animal Care Control, known as the pound, for about eight years now. And just walking dogs at this time of year, giving bedding, filling up water bowls. They're always understaffed. Volunteers pretty much run the place, doing adoptions, just doing anything we can to make their lives better, feeding them when they're just getting too sick, and just kind of spreading the word, taking photos, videos, spreading them on Facebook everywhere we can to try to get it known that these animals need homes. There's about 450 animals there, and about 100 come in every day, and maybe only 20 leave a day. So, we could definitely use the help. So, my last thing I want to say is spay, neuter, adopt. Don't buy from breeders. Don't breed. Volunteer. Donate. And that's about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're going to picture Mayor, and we'll do a nice picture. Everyone's in here.
Who just came, and she was given a good welcome, and is she doing okay?
My mother-in-law just followed us out to Gilbert, too, so we're taking over your town now.
Thanks so much, and good luck on our 12K race. Thanks. Thank you for all who have participated. Next on the agenda is communication from citizens. Vice Mayor Cook, do we have any requests tonight?
Mayor, tonight, we do not have any.
We move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Cook, what requests we have from the council?
Mayor, we're going to pull number six.
And that would be it?
That'd be it.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion on the other items.
Mayor, for clarification, seven was removed from the agenda, correct?
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, what I'd like to do is move that we approve Agenda Items eight through 26.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a six-oh vote. Thank you. Agenda item number six, please. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I have a slight amendment to the agreement I want to propose. It's pretty simple, and I think it's consistent with the intent anyway, and I'll just briefly explain that. I think everyone's pretty aware that I would like all of our agreements to be fair market value as far as use of town property. And it is my understanding that the intent of this agreement is that the tenant will be providing improvements to the property that will be roughly equal to what the fair market value of a lease would be over the course of their term. And so with that in mind, I'll just tell you what my proposed amendment is, but basically adding a clause to the proposed lease stating that the total value of tenant improvements shall not be grossly disproportionate to the fair market rent over the term of the lease. And that language comes really from a gift clause principle anyway, that it shouldn't be grossly disproportionate. And so I think with that, if we could get that small amendment, I think I could be ready to approve it. But I'm open to the thoughts of the rest of the council.
Would there be a council, to our town attorney, please?
Mayor, members of the council, that is the intent of the agreement, and that clause can be easily added.
What would it mean to St. Xavier University? What would they have to do?
To do what they've already agreed to do. And so it just states explicitly what's implicit in the current agreement. They will, while they occupy the building for five months, they will be making substantial improvements. And all that this clause does is make explicit the provision or the intention that the improvements or the fair market rent is not grossly disproportionate to the improvements that they've agreed to make. And that's consistent with what the plan is.
Councilmember Ray?
Do we have any indication from St. Xavier as to their willingness to accept this language?
Dan, please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dan Henderson, and I serve as the Economic Development Director. Councilmember Ray, in addressing your specific question, we've had that conversation with St. Xavier. This would come as no surprise to St. Xavier, and their response was this clause is reasonable.
Can I second the motion, Mayor?
Yes.
Second.
All right, with that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a six-oh vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing, and Vice Mayor Cook, what requests you have from the council or from the public? Do we have any requests to speak?
We have no communication request, and we do have item 31 being postponed or moved to the 18th.
Okay. So, to the council, and I'll probably at least mention on 28, it would be nice for the public to hear a little bit more about that, but outside of that, on 27, 29, 30, 32, are there desires to have discussion on those items?
32, I just have another small amendment I want to suggest.
Any other requests? On the agenda, and so Vice Mayor Cook, just to confirm again, we don't have any requests from the public? 28, okay. And we'll pull 28 and 32. The agenda does talk about if we have citizens that wish to speak in this public hearing, so I will, we don't have any requests, so I'll skip over that, but it is noted in the minutes and on the agenda for the public to see. And I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 27, 29, 30, and close the public hearing on Agenda Items 27, 29, 30. And if someone would like to make a motion and include to move Agenda Item 31 to our December 18th meeting, I would appreciate that.
Mayor, I would like us to, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Items 27, 29, 30, in that Agenda Item 31 be moved or continued to the December 18th council meeting.
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a six-oh vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28, and Councilmember Taylor, question or comment? I think for my sake, if town staff could just give a brief overview so the public would understand a little bit more about this, and then we'll have additional discussion. Thank you, Cindy.
Evening, Mayor. Afternoon, evening, Mayor and council. This is Cindy Mathiason, Finance and Management Services Director. I didn't prepare a presentation, but basically we have the opportunity, under current market conditions, to refinance our, about $30 million of our 2006 public facilities MPC bonds, and we anticipate a savings of about $1.8 million, at least under current market conditions. The savings will be applied, allocated back to the police, parks, SDF, and the general fund, you know, as we're used as sources for those projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. And Cindy, I'm sorry I didn't catch up with you prior to council. The question I had is, we're not adding any new debt to this, we're just
Simply refinancing.
Refinancing.
Exactly, for a lower interest rate.
Yeah, well, great. I appreciate that. I think this is a great thing, and appreciate you keeping an eye out for the taxpayer and how we can, you know, extend the dollar. So, I appreciate this work.
Thank you. I've got lots of help out here.
Thank you. Another great moment in the history of Gilbert. So, with that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 28 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 29.
Second. 28.
Second that.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a six-oh vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 32. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, this isn't much of a change here, but I certainly agree with the need to create some regulation to deal with the problem we're having, most specifically in our new parking structure, with the use of that structure that is not intended and is in conflict with the intended use of the structure. My only concern here is just that we have a very broad term that's being used to address a more narrow problem. The term is town-owned property. My thought is to just amend this motion to say town-owned parking structures, parking lots, and garages. I'm not a fan of creating broader laws and regulations than is really necessary for the current problem, and so that was all my thought behind that, Mayor, and just throw that out there for other thoughts from the council.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Vice Mayor Cook?
Mike, just a quick question. As relates to any of our, what we'll call, flat parking lots that we have both here at Town Hall or at Freestone Park or at the south facility, if skateboarders were to use that as, you know, recreational use, do we not have any provisions to say we're not allowed to use that today?
We do not. So, we would, now this proposed amendment, you know, is for town-owned parking structures, parking lots, and garages. And so, you know, depending on the lot, it might fit within that category. Vice Mayor?
And I think Councilmember Peterson is basically saying, do you want to identify each of the lots as put as a list of them, and then this list could grow over time based upon council members' decision to vote in providing more restrictions?
So, for me, I would prefer that, just to answer the question. We could even get more narrow and more specific, but I also recognize there may be others who want it broader. So, I threw something out there that I thought would be maybe a compromise, but if the others on the council want to go even more narrow than that language, I'm certainly open to it.
I'll insert a humorous comment, and it's not helpful, but I did have some lobbying today from high school students who have felt like that parking garage is now the number one place to take a longboard because they can go down and take the elevator up. So, not all citizens are in favor of this, but continue with the discussion about what language is appropriate.
Mayor, this question again down for legal. Are there any, so right now, there aren't any provisions that would, other than maybe a trespassing provision that would stop this activity if it were to happen, even here on the grounds at the Town Hall, some of our stairwells and some of the different architectural features here? Or is there something on the books?
Mayor, Councilman Cooper, there is general trespassing, but this makes it more specific and gives us more enforcement options.
And could you give your opinion to Councilmember Peterson's suggestion? Do you, are you okay with that? Any concerns? Would it help?
Mayor, members of the council, that's agreeable with staff, that more specific enumeration does in fact work and doesn't take anything away from what staff wishes to do.
Okay. So, should we proceed? Vice Mayor Cook?
So, you know, I was thinking like at Freestone Park, if a skateboarder wanted to cross the parking lot with their skateboard to get to the skate park, then it sounds like that that could be in violation. I just want to make sure that we clarify this because I'm more, I'm more open in specifically stating that if the parking garage was identified as the, you know, single structure.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook, and members of the council, that hypothetical is true only if there's a sign that prohibits the use across the parking lot.
Okay. Okay. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 32, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve this agenda item with the amendment to the proposed ordinance specifying that the regulated activities may be prohibited in town-owned parking structures, parking lots, and garages rather than on simply town-owned property. Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a six-oh vote. Thank you. We move to Agenda Item 33, Board Commission and Committee Updates Reports. Any on my right side? Okay. And now a report from Town Manager on Current Events?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize the members of our finance staff, Cindy Mathiason and Florence Schultz and the rest of our team, as well as Dawn Buckland and the rest of our budget analysts from the Office of Management Budget, and the great work with the bond refinancing and the subsequent $2 million in savings to the taxpayers of Gilbert. That was good work.
Thank you. I think we second, and third, and fourth, and fifth, and sixth, and seventh that, and eighth that. Thank you. Report from Council on Current Events?
I just wanted to share that this morning, Patrick and I had the honor and privilege of seeing his new office at the new holding facility across the parking lot. And we were asked that, you know, if we could partake in some of their evening cuisine that's over there. But anyways, we had the opportunity to see the new holding facility that we share with our partnership with Chandler, and the operational efficiency of what the Police Department has done to move individuals that have been incarcerated from
But anyways, we had opportunity to see the new holding facility that we share with our partnership with, with Chandler and the operational efficiency of what the police department has done to move individuals that have been incarcerated from our patrols, transfer over to our detention officer was just wonderful because it minimizes the amount of our patrol officers being in the processing center. They basically can now hand off individuals right to detention officers and our patrol folks can go right back into the field. So, the efficiency improvements of that was just wonderful, so it was a great decision by the council to allow us to move forward with that.
Thank you. Any other comments? On behalf of the council, since we last met, we've had our Gilbert Days and the lighting ceremony in downtown Gilbert and many, many, many positive comments from Gilbert citizens, so I wish to thank all involved. The lighting of the water tower is a hit and I probably am up to about 30 residents who have either called me or verbally found me or sent emails to say they really like that added look and they've been talking about maybe even having colors for different parts of the year, such as July 4th and so forth, but we'll let our Parks Recreation Team, excuse me, think about that. But on behalf of the council, to all involved, thank you. It was a great celebration this month. With that, thank you for the participation. We will declare this meeting adjourned.